We're live and ready when you are, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Hey, we'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. This is a regular meeting of the Saldovia City Council Monday, January thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-five. Time is six oh four P. M. And we'll go and do roll call. Let's see. Peyton, she is not on yet. School markers absent at the moment. Keith Lee is out traveling unexcused. Langbart?
Here.
Okay, Barbara?
Here.
Okay, Rojas?
Here.
And Kennedy?
Here.
Okay, so we do have four council members present, which is a quorum, so we will be able to continue. So we'll have it. Four present, two absent at the moment here. If you'll go ahead and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, founded under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I M. C. As we said, we have Keith Lee has an excused absence and Peyton's supposed to join us late here. I M. D. Agenda approval. We'll go and look for motion to approve tonight's agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion to approve tonight's agenda by Rojas, second by Kennedy. Any further discussion on the agenda before we vote? Okay, hearing none, we'll go and vote on the approval of tonight's agenda. All those in favor. Langbart?
Aye.
Barbara?
Aye.
Rojas?
Aye.
And Kennedy?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes with four in the affirmative. And two absent. I M. E. Consent agenda. All items under the consent agenda are approved with a single motion, no discussion, and one vote. A council member may request to remove any item for discussion in a separate vote. Items removed from the consent agenda will be placed under new business. Tonight's consent agenda consists of item one, approval of minutes from the regular meeting, December sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. No ordinance introductions. Item three, resolutions. We have a couple of them. Item three, resolution twenty-five dash twenty-eight, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Saldovia, Alaska, authorizing the acceptance of the Alaska Clean Waters actions. A C W A grant for the Saldovia Stormwater Infrastructure Improvements Project in the amount of two hundred and thirty-two thousand, nine hundred and sixty-eight, and authorizing the city manager to negotiate and execute the appropriate documents. Item three B, resolution twenty-five dash twenty-nine, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Saldovia, Alaska, authorizing the acceptance of the Alaska Clean Waters actions, A C W A grant for the Main Street Saldovia Stormwater Infrastructure Improvement Project in the amount of two hundred and forty-nine thousand, nine hundred and seventy-nine, and authorizing the city manager to negotiate and execute the appropriate documents. And resolution twenty-five dash thirty, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Saldovia, Alaska, authorizing the acceptance of a Title III Emergency Planning and Preparedness Grant for the Multipurpose Building Generation Improvements Project in the amount of fifty thousand, and authorizing the city manager to negotiate and execute the appropriate documents. All right, that's our consent agenda. Does any member wish to remove any item for further discussion tonight? Okay, and let the record reflect that council member Keith Lee is now in attendance. Okay, hearing none, then I'll look for a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion by Langbart to approve tonight's consent agenda with a second by Rojas. Any further discussion before we vote? Okay, hearing none, we'll go and vote on the approval of tonight's consent agenda. All those in favor. Keith Lee? Do you have to unmute her by chance? Can you hear us, Ashley?
Aye.
There we go. Langbart?
Aye.
Barbara?
Aye.
Rojas?
Aye.
And Kennedy? Okay, motion passes with five in the affirmative and one absent. F. Merrill Proclamations, we have none tonight. Item G, public presentations prior notice. Looks like we're scheduled to have Sarah Vance, our representative in the Alaska State House, on for an update tonight. There she is. Think you still have your mute on, Sarah? Having a couple tech- technical difficulties here. We'll give it just a moment here. See if we can't get Representative Vance back. Misspell. No regrets.
Okay, here I am.
There we go.
My apologies. I am working from my cabin in Juneau on my new iPad, and it was not letting me access the microphone. And my computer is on its way from my Homer office to the Juneau office. We're making that transition right now of getting ready to work. So thank you for your patience. We begin the legislative session next Tuesday on the twenty-first. We will be sworn into office for the thirty-fourth legislature. So right now, everyone's just trying to get offices in place. New staff orientation begins this week. And you may have seen the first pre-file of bills filed last Friday. We have another one coming this Friday where you'll see the first round of bills introduced. And of course legislators can introduce bills at any point after that. So I introduced a bill that I had last, last session in my previous term, and that's House Bill twenty-nine. And it's the school healthcare consolidation that allows pooling of insurance. It's an optional opportunity for the schools to consolidate healthcare under the State of Alaska, Alaska Care Plan. It is my hope that this will reduce the strain on education dollars and allow opportunities for better healthcare for our teachers and, and support staff. So this was previously supported by our school district, by the Matsu School District, and many other municipalities. It didn't make it across the finish line this last term, so some of my colleagues asked me to introduce it again. I already have some members of the majority reaching out to me saying, hey, I'm looking forward to working with your office on this bill. We know that our school district is facing astronomical cost for healthcare for families. And then I saw on the news recently that Alaskans are going to potentially see a seventeen percent increase in the cost of healthcare again. So this bill would provide an opportunity for our school districts to, to pool with the state and save money, and I'm hoping that this is the year. This week, I will be introducing two other bills. One of them is one that I, I developed last year, and it is an A I. C. Sam bill, and C. Sam is child sexual abuse material. Right now, there are no laws on the books dealing with A I., artificial intelligence. And I don't know if you, any of you saw in the news this last fall where some teenagers used an A I. App to take photos of their classmates, and essentially will create nude photos from a regular photo of someone, and some young girls were victims of this. And they, I've had two moms that were in my circle that came to me and said it was their daughters that were impacted. And the law enforcement told them that there are no laws on the books dealing with it. My bill was one that would have provided justice in the area of A I.-generated pornography for minors. So I'm going to introduce that as a standalone bill this year and hope to receive bipartisan support. It does not have, yet have a bill number. It will get one on Friday when it's released. And then I'm working on a new piece of legislation that is an App Store Accountability Act. There is a similar bill that's introduced in Congress. There are several states are introducing it that would provide age verification at the App Store level. This would provide, require the big tech companies to be accountable for access to what is in the app stores. As you know, there is a lot of content that is not age appropriate for children and minors. And when we, when we participate in app, apps of various kinds, it is a contractual basis. And children are not allowed to enter into contracts. And this would be another tool for parents to be able to safeguard for their children from things that they should not be accessing. And one lighthearted, but very serious note is, we've all seen, you know, the stories on social media where a child got ahold of the Amazon app and bought a lot of toys, and there are all of these great packages arrived on the doorstep because they just started, you know, making all kinds of purchases. So requiring age verification and maybe a face recognition, like a lot of our phones already do, it would help safeguard against those types of things. But there is also very harmful material that is influencing our young people. And this would just put the tools back in the parent's hands. Couple years ago, CDC released a report on the mental health status of our youth, of our high schoolers. And Homer Police Department Lieutenant Ryan Browning is the one who highlighted me about this. And it's, it noted that one in four high school girls have a plan to commit suicide. Well, I have high school daughters, and I said, well, they're, my second daughter's fifteen. Her core group of friends, there's about four of them. And so statistically, that tells me that one of them has a plan, an action plan, to end her life. And it really rocked me as a mom. And just the need to address this issue with our social media and the online interactions is what is motivating me to take a look at what we can do to better safeguard our kids. So the CDC report talked about the online bullying and the peer pressure and things like that, that is really taking a toll on our kids. So if you're wondering why, why is Sarah involved in, in, you know, things like C. Sam? And, you know, the App Store things and, and a variety of measures having to do with human trafficking. All of those have to do with protecting our kids. I am adamant for free speech, but want to make sure that we provide the proper boundaries and accountability, and that parents are making decisions for their kids in an appropriate manner. So I'd love to have your insight and interaction. Those two bills will be released on Friday. Overall, the legislature's priorities, as you may have heard, will be on energy and education once again. There's still more work to be done. And we will, we will see what the, the direction will be. It's hard to tell exactly how things are going to go. Besides, the Democrats are in control in both the House and the Senate this year. They're claiming to be bipartisan majorities, but they are very open about it being Democrats and very moderate Republicans. I am choosing to caucus with the House Republicans as I have before. And so you will hear me probably opposing quite a few measures that I think are, are taking Alaska in a very different direction, and some of which are the election laws that have already been introduced. They want to provide what I call an open borders on our elections and also reduce the amounts that individuals can contribute to individual candidates. So I encourage you to follow me on my social media and my newsletters. I'm going to be vocal about these. And they're, they're bills that they've introduced before and didn't pass, and I've been vocal about them in the past. And I give reasons why I feel that they would not be beneficial to Alaska. And that will, that will be an interesting conversation moving forward. However, I do feel that with this majority, there are a lot of good things that we can agree on, and I intend to be working on those. I care about good policy, and I don't care what flavor of politician you are. If it's good for Alaska, I'm going to work on that. And that's what I intend to do. And there's a lot of good things around education, around like this App Store Accountability Act, you know, protecting our kids that, that we're going to do. One area of interest that might get people talking in your community is, was introduced by a senator, and that's banning cellphone use in schools. And this has been talked about more and more, that it removes the distraction from students in the classroom and allows the teachers to be able to do their job. This bill is introduced right now would give school districts the ability to implement it as they see fit. It will, that's one that I'm going to keep an eye on and, and take a look. Bill Wilikowski is a senator, Democrat senator, but I think he's seeing the same thing that we are, that kids learn better when they're focused on academics and, and listening to the teacher rather than being distracted by their devices online. So those are types of bills that we're going to need the public interaction on and, and get community support or say, hey, this is, this is an area that I see could be problematic. Those are the types of things I want to hear from you. You may have heard the budget is under constraint this year, so there's going to be a very, very tight capital budget, if any at all. I have a feeling that it will be basic necessities. However, I do encourage you to, to submit your priorities to CAPSIS so that, you know, as, as the, the marble jar is shaken, you know, the, the sand kind of sifts through there. And sometimes those community projects end up game, getting put in the capital budget, and every little bit helps. So we're going to do our best. I'm all for a balanced budget and not drawing from savings. But I'm also a big defender of the dividend. So it's going to be a very hard conversation this year with what the governor introduced in his budget. But I look forward to prioritizing the needs of our district and, and working with you as a city to be able to advance what we need to see for our district. So I'll take any questions you have.
Thank you, Sarah. Appreciate that. I'm sure you're looking forward to getting, getting back in the saddle and getting the next session started here. So lots of interesting things this year. Any questions, comments for Representative Vance? John?
Hey, Sarah. How are you?
Hey, John.
Hey, I, I support the cellphone deal in the schools. I think that needs to be gone for them kids. And we need a little account of it all in the classrooms. You know, the devices have kind of taken over everybody's lives. So I'm glad to see you're working on that and some of the other stuff, and keep up the good work as always.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Heidi?
Thank you, Representative Vance, for joining us. This is Heidi Gagel, city manager over here. Not necessarily, well, one small question, just if there's a ETA on when that CAPSIS will open. I know it's early in session, hasn't opened quite yet, but curious if you have any information on that. And really wanting to send a big thank you for supporting Saldovia's Material for Safe Streets project. We were able to purchase material this last fall, and already you can see a big difference in the streets. So we have some stockpiled, and we'll be doing more work in the spring. But next time you come over, I hope you're able to take a tour around and, and visit and see some of those areas that we've worked on, and what a difference that's made. So a big thank you for that. And another out item of interest that I did pass along to your office early in December is that we are looking to work with D O. T. to clean up the Jacklaff Uplands. So that, that area has been opened up for lease. The, the existing leases, that application was renewed with a reduced footprint. So we're working with D N. R. to see what that looks like, to potentially lease the open area now. But also the city council just kind of wanting to work through the cleanup process and not have that fall squarely onto the city's shoulders. So you'll probably be hearing from me in the future about that. I'm still waiting for a response, an initial response back from D O. T. along with a few other initiatives. I'm in some fun projects coming up. So I know you're always great at supporting us, and, and don't be surprised if you hear from us for letters of support in the future. And the last thing I want to say is, just as a parent, is that cell phones in schools, we did, I am on the school pack here. And last year, we voted to have cell phones removed from the schools, and that has made a significant difference this school year. And the kids, even a few of them, asked for it. They, they said, it's too distracting. We're happy to put our phones in a pouch. And, and it's, it's been really nice just to have that established. So just throwing that out there as a parent. I'm really wanting to say a big thank you. And yeah, if you have any idea when CAPSIS will open, please let us know. Otherwise, I'm sure we'll see an email from you.
Yes, thank you for that update, and I will get that CAPSIS email to you. I am hiring new staff. She is flying in Juneau tonight. It's Felicia Wisar. Her parents own Wisar Construction, Wisar Homes in Homer. May be familiar with that family. So she's going to be joining me, and I will get her up to speed on all of your projects. But yes, if you need a letter of support for anything or help with D O. T., please let me know. I'm kind of lagging behind just be, on emails, just because we're, we've been in a time of holidays and transition and things like that. But I definitely want to be supportive of you and the projects, and I'm glad that you were able to put the safe roads to use because we need great roads and infrastructure. So I'm doing what I can.
Thank you so much. We look forward to working with you in the coming year.
Yeah, thank you, Heidi. Yes, Sarah, I want to just chime in here, too. I think you've already heard it from two of us here, but I'm going to make it three. As a parent and a grandparent, and then even listening to and recognizing in society today so many of the problems that you talked about, cyberbullying, you know, the suicide rates among teens and children. You can track all this back to the cellphone as far as I'm concerned. It had, I mean, there's, there's great things. I understand communication and technology, but it has gone to the point now where I look at my kids and my grandkids, and I see how much the cell phones drive everything in their lives. And it's different. I didn't grow up in that generation as most of us here. But it's got to change. Something has to give. And if it takes it, the ban to be at the state level, hundred percent in support of that. I don't even think I'd leave it as, as an option. I haven't read the bill. I don't even think I'd leave it as an option to opt out for, for certain communities. Because I think if you took a vote today around the state, it would be overwhelming on the residents of the state to, to just flat out get rid of them in, in schools. So it'll solve a lot of these ancillary problems with kids. I think it'll just work itself out, and we'll start to solve a, a lot of these, these problems with kids that are being bullied, have self-esteem problem, all those things that we never had to experience as, as kids growing up. We just, it wasn't, we just didn't do it. So we didn't have to, have to deal with that. So I would encourage you to, to dig in deep on that. I'm going to as well, and then hopefully we can even get a letter of support here for, for that. So appreciate you, appreciate your update on that. I see we got a few more questions here. How many? You got your hand up?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I agree with the, the cellphone topic there, and I would just like to piggyback on that when you guys were talking about allocating funding towards schools and considering how to spend those monies. Please, please add the same logic towards computer learning and distance learning. You can't expect kids to thrive in a classroom where they're spending the majority of their time in front of a screen, even if it's just a computer screen. And I know that our world is changing and, you know, the way monies go, and with, I understand how expensive it is to have a body in a classroom, but I'm also seeing more and more pushes towards having more and more classrooms go to predominantly distance learning, even in the younger grade levels, and that's just not equitable. So I would just encourage you to apply that same logic when you're thinking about kids learning with an in-person teacher versus a computer screen. Thank you.
Thanks, Harmony. All right, anyone else? All right. Well, thank you, Sarah. Appreciate you coming on tonight, taking the time, and we'll let you, let you get settled in, and good luck with everybody getting sworn in, getting started. And we look forward to periodic check-ins with you in your office, and good luck moving, moving forward here.
Thank you. It was good to hear from you.
Have a good night. All right, that concludes our update from Representative Vance. We'll move on to item H, public presentation for items not on the agenda.
We have none.
Nobody signed up for that. Okay. We'll move on to item I, Committee and Advisory Board Reports, and we have Walt Sonnen in the audience tonight to give us the update on the Circac or Cook Inlet Region Citizens Advisory Council.
Yeah, thank you very much. And also I'll be giving you an update on the S O. S. Organization after I do my Circac report, so please bear with me. I attended the Anchorage Meeting of Circac, which always occurs in Anchorage in early December. And this is one of three general board meetings that we have. And I report pretty much on the, the presentations there. There's all, awful lot of in sort of inside stuff about budgets and, and this and that, but that's sort of extraneous. We heard from We heard from Yatimar Rodriguez with the ADEC. And he is in charge of SPAR, which is the Spill Prevention and Response portion. And this guy came on board just a few years ago. He's really sharp and very impressive. And he reports that they have 97% retention of staff, which is very good news as the the turnover in ADEC generally was like one in five every year, which didn't speak very well for the organization itself, which I don't know, impressed me quite a bit. And Emma Polkon was confirmed as the Director of the Overall Organization. I've heard her speak before. She's she's pretty sharp. So we heard from Captain Culpepper, who is the captain of the Port Coast Guard in Anchorage. And he he reports that there are to be three new cutters. We have in Homer, a 110-foot cutter that's been there for quite some time. It will be replaced by a 154-foot vessel. And I think that even though the vessels are due online sometime early this year, that the vessel, these vessels, well, the one in Homer and Seward won't be online because facilities need to be revamped in order to harbor them and close to locations. And there's there's something that went through Congress a couple of years ago that that really doesn't fit in Alaska. We have what we call vessels of opportunity in the spill response thing where fishing vessels may go out and help tow boom around in response to a oil spill event. And the the rule, the official rule is that these vessels have to come up to some very high Coast Guard standards. And we we here in Alaska have applied for those rules to be slackened in our situation. Formerly, it hasn't happened, but we still have the right to use our existing vessels of opportunity in the same manner that we have been in the past. There was a report about the ice cameras, and I'm I'm not sure if you guys are aware, but there are nine ice cameras spread out from the Nukiski Dock up to the Port of Alaska and Anchorage that are available to the pilots and the skippers of vessels going to and from Anchorage and in the Nukiski area as well to look at ice conditions. And there are flybys and there are satellite images as well, which aid the the skippers to inform them about ice conditions, which is certainly a vast improvement that's occurred over the last 10 years. And this was initiated by by Circac and it it has been very well received. There's one camera that that everyone would really like to have, but it would cost about a million dollars to put in and that that's one of the what is it? Ty Fire Island. What's the name of the island? The island just before you get to Anchorage with the wind generators on it.
Fire Island.
Fire Island.
Yeah, Fire Island.
But apparently to run power out there would be very, very expensive. Todd Paxton, the the Director of CISPRA, the Cook Inlet Spill Prevention and Response Organization. His budget is 17 million bucks and he he provides the overall safety net and spill response for the inlet. And he he will be he has expanded his services outside the inlet. We, I'm not quite exactly sure, but how this will go. But it's a it's a change of his organization. And there are two vessels that come in here to service the barge that is anchored out here, which is a oil spill recovery barge. And one of them, the Perseverance, 270 feet long, was built in 1976. He's looking to replace that. And we had a report from the Port of Alaska, which is the main port in Anchorage. It is in the midst of a major renovation to make it earthquake-proof. Earthquake of the magnitude of this 1964 earthquake, it should withstand. It is a project that is not done yet, but will total will be 1.8 to 2.3 billion dollars, which is the largest project in Alaska since the pipeline. 85% of the fuel that we use in this area comes through comes through that port. That's pretty much it. There was a report from the Bureau of Ocean Energy Advantage. He talked about the oil and gas production and how it's being done in a space safe manner. And he's looking forward to more exploratory things for energy generation, wind tide and and wave generation. So does anyone have any questions about that report?
Any questions for Walt on the CISPRA report? Walt, I just have one quick one for you on the perseverance. If they were to replace that, would those funds have to come out of their operating budget? Is that that's is that how that would work or have they talked about all they'd have to wait and look for another appropriation or something to for additional funding for that?
I would I would guess that that comes out of their their budget. They aren't funded by anyone else. They are funded by the oil companies in proportion to the amount of product that they that they handle throughout the year. Marathon is the the main funder. And after that Hillcor, and then there's a number of smaller ones.
Okay. Okay.
As far as the SOS Response Organization goes, I I'm the current president. And I announced last year that I would, this current year, which ends next month, I will be resigning my position as president. And Mark James, our Vice President, who has been with the organization 20 years himself, is also looking for something else to do. And we've seen this coming for a while. And we want to continue with the organization, but we need to talk with Todd Paxton, who is our major funder. We we receive $12,000 from him every year and he funds our exercises as well. And we want to see if maybe we can coordinate with the fire department here in town to spread out the organization a little bit. And the the one hurdle that that it seems that we need to address and we don't have any answers on is that we receive funding and we are able to pay our responders for exercises and response. And this is not so with the volunteer department. Fire Department. And so we need to explore that and and talk it over. But I will have to report more about that in the in the future. We have a board meeting tomorrow and we will have our annual meeting in a month.
Time to start recruiting some of these younger folks to step in.
Roger on that.
Any additional questions for Walt on the SOS report?
Mr. Mayor, if I may.
Yeah, you bet. Go ahead, Vivian.
Yeah, just a big thank you to you all for all your years of service with the SOS. And your reporting is always exceptional. I really appreciate all the information you share with us. But thank you for your years of service. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Vivian. All right. Thanks, Walt, for coming in tonight. Appreciate the update on both of those organizations.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks. All right, that'll take us to item J, Administrative Reports. Looks like we don't have any tonight. Item K, Public Hearings, none scheduled. Item L, Unfinished Business. Item L1, Resolution 25-27, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Saldovia, Alaska, adopting council priorities for calendar year 2025. This will be found on page 17 of your packet and we'll let the city manager take it away.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So the city council had a discussed, brief discussion about this at their previous city council meeting in December. And there were some suggestions for edits and additions to the 2025 Saldovia City Council Priorities. So you can see those on page 19. And if you want an example of of what it looked like previously, page 21 is the 2024 Saldovia City Council Priorities and Goals. So improving finances, we've removed closing the general fund and small boat harbor deficit. Because fortunately, that has been taken care of, establish fund reserves. We added another word to fund the established fund reserves because they haven't established. The return kiosk funds, 30,900 to Saldovia Permanent Fund was taken care of, so that was removed. And then develop capital budget when funds are available. It remains on there, but moves up to number two. As well as number three was a recommendation I put on there to also provide funds for the assigned fund balances. So not only for the fund reserves, but for that, those assigned funds that are sitting payable to the general fund or payable from the general fund, I should say. But we're not quite there with our ending fund balance to be able to cover that portion. So I don't know if there are any other finances, goals that the city council would like to add. But now's the time, if there's any that you can think of.
Open it up to council. If anyone has any additions or comments, questions on the on our priorities. And we're talking about the first column there, improving the city finances and the changes that we had made. We're down to three items on there as of now. Good, John?
Okay, if there isn't anything on that, then the next column is Capital Improvement Plan Priorities and Goals. This is the same five projects that were on there last year for 2024. I didn't hear a lot of feedback from council for this year. If I was going to recommend or suggest any, even though they are now in the works, it's just great to have it on there as a prioritization for staff time and budget as we work through them. I would think through septic lift station repair project. And now the multi-purpose building generation improvements project, which you guys saw on the consent agenda. And I'm happy to talk a little bit more about that if you want more information. But those will be, the the big three we have coming up this year is Jacklough, raw water transmission line and a septic lift station. Some smaller ones now is the Generation Improvements Project and then the the City Office Improvements Project. So that's, those are some ongoing things that we are working towards as a city office and city.
Exciting. Any additional comments, questions on the Capital Improvement Plan Priorities and Goals?
Do you guys want to add those two on there or just keep it the way it is with the the five that are on there now?
Well, the other two, so the other two are going to, I mean, they're going to happen now, obviously.
Hopefully.
Yeah. We could, we could add them to this. I mean, that's Yeah, I don't have any objection to adding those two.
Okay. And I did note that on the top of those two, it says priority for 2024 in each bowl in each box. So I will change that. That's a clerical to 2025. And then under the last column, Community Development, the one through four were on there from 2024. So they are carryovers. They're continuing. However, number two, we did add under the continuing strengthening local and state partnerships and collaborations. The project with Noah Saldovia and Saldovia Village Tribe in the City of Saldovia for Fish Creek Dam, Fish Passage Burial Removal Barrier Removal. Sorry, I cannot speak this evening, going too fast, I think. So that one was added on there per the suggestion on the Saldovia City Council. And then Land Use Management Plan was just updated to include annual updates, since that's that's a regular practice. On four, under four for housing, it was updated to include a housing needs assessment. And then below that in a bullet point to identify community needs and the role of the city. So it's a little bit more defined versus just housing. And then under number five, the 2014 Saldovia Comprehensive Plan Update was included.
Okay, that looks like about what we talked about. Any other comments from council on the third, third column, Community Development?
Okay. And then so with that, with, well, you can add those two projects on and the resolution still stands. There's no changes to that. If there are individuals who like working with the city on the council on either finances, capital improvement plan or community development, I mean, want to add your name to the bottom of these boxes. That just means that if we have a question, you're the first person we'll call to work through some of these projects if there's additional supports needed. That way we can have that council support and buy-in as we work through without a full body and a full meeting. It's just support through the year.
Yep, and we've done this in the past, too. And it's totally optional up to you guys. If someone wants to be considered a council champion for any of these, speak, speak now.
Heidi, you can put me under improving city finances.
Thank you, Ashley. Appreciate that.
Question?
Yep, go ahead, John.
With with Bobby retiring, who's attending the Tastamina meetings, do you know?
That's an excellent question. So Bobby is still attending those meetings. And I try to attend as often as possible, but another person would be fantastic.
Okay. The second issue there, I'm pretty interested in that. That's something I care about, the dam removal. And certainly if Bobby's long, if Bobby's willing to continue, I'm good with that. But if somebody's not attending, then I need to know.
I have attended the last couple of meetings.
Good, good. That's what I wanted to hear.
Yeah. I try.
We can put you guys down there for safekeeping under AMHS and uh council.
For the fish dam? Yeah.
Okay, Kennedy under fish.
Anyone else?
Mr. Mayor, if I may.
Yep, go ahead, Vivian.
Why did you put me down before we just kind of put ourselves down for a chunk of one of these uh criterias? Why don't you put me down for the capital improvement plan priorities, priorities and goals? And I'll just be a sound word for that.
Great. Thank you, Vivian.
You bet.
Okay, I think we're good on that.
Thank you guys for all your support.
Okay, so can you read back real quick the two that we added to um the capital improvements?
Yes, septic lift station repair project. And actually that should be improvement project. Sorry, that's, that's the lingo that they fun, funding sources tend to like, um, and the multi-purpose building generation improvements project.
Okay. Okay. Um, let's see if we're gonna do final action on this tonight, then you want me to um, do you want us to get an amendment to add those two or just do it by discussion or?
Um, so there's a resolution, but it doesn't specifically call out um those individual subcategories. So you guys can pass the resolution um with the amendment to the priorities as discussed.
Okay. Sounds good. All right, we'll go ahead and bring it back to council. Any um additional discussion um by council on our twenty twenty-five priorities? Okay, I'll just make a comment. I think this um, obviously we had a um meeting or two to discuss this and went back and forth a little bit, made the changes, and I think you did a good job to capture what the discussion uh was and the intent of the, of the council moving forward. So all solid uh solid goals and priorities here. So I'll definitely be in support of this. And we'll go ahead and uh open it up to the public. Either online or in person that wishes to comment on the twenty twenty-five Saldovia City Council priorities and goals. No one online, Liz?
I've got mine, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. And no hands raised here in the audience?
Looks good.
Okay. All right, we'll go ahead and um bring it back to council for final action on resolution twenty-five dash twenty-seven and I'll look for a motion.
Mayor Campbell.
Yep, go ahead, John.
I'll make a motion to uh in favor of twenty-five, twenty-seven. Resolution of the City Council of the City of Saldovia, Alaska, adopting council priorities for the calendar year twenty twenty-five.
Okay.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion to approve resolution twenty-five dash twenty-seven with a second from Keith Lee.
And Mr. Mayor just says a clarification. That's with the amendments as discussed this evening for the priorities.
That's what the, the amendments adding the um, the septic uh lift station improvement plan and the multi-purpose building generation project. Okay, so we have a motion and a second and further discussion from council before we vote. Okay, hearing none, we'll go and vote on the approval of resolution twenty-five dash twenty-seven. All those in favor? Peyton?
Aye.
Keith Lee?
Aye.
Langbart?
Aye.
Barbara?
Aye.
Rojas?
Aye.
Kennedy?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes unanimously, six in the affirmative, zero opposed. Okay, thank you, everyone. Okay, item M, new business, none. Item N, city manager's report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, it's been a while since we've met. The last city council meeting was in December, so about a month. Uh, so there's quite a bit uh to update you all on, but uh I'll try to make it short and sweet. Starting off with the city office and maintenance shop energy improvements project. Uh, the, excitingly, the new bay door for that shop, and then we have to replace a panel on one of the, the bottoms of the fire hall on the bottom of one of the fire hall doors um as well. Made it in before the ferry stopped running. So the, we purchased those through Alaska Doors and they plan on being here tomorrow for that installation. That's exciting. Yeah, we're looking forward to it. Uh, Senator Murkowski's FY twenty-six appropriations request has opened. Um, that's from January second and closes February fourteenth. So we'll get in those legislative priorities um as provided by the Saldovia City Council um here in the next week or so. Saldovia Volunteer Fire and EMS Emergency Radio Upgrade Project um was, an application was submitted for this project to the assistance of firefighters um from officer, Finance Officer Jaeger uh in December. She also submitted an application. This was a really quick turnaround. We received a notification um from the state of Alaska through our senior meals program that there was some funding, additional funding um from from uh some of the COVID monies that came out um that needed to be expended ASAP and they had to award it before the end of the year. So they sent out a request asking for Title III Emergency Planning and Preparedness Projects. Um, we submitted a project for the repair of our generator. Actually, we wanted to sub- submit a, a project for the repair of our generator. Um, however, we did have an electrician look at it um and were notified that the current generator we have, I think is a ten K um would not cover the needs that we were talking about. So we amped up the project to include a new generator, the wiring for the building should be able to run the whole building um in case of an emergency or a power outage. Um, and it relates back to, to seniors because of the program and emergency response. Um, so it all fit into place. Uh, we received a phone call on December thirty-first that said you need to sign for this today if you want it. Um, so we were awarded those funds. Big thank you to Finance Officer Jaeger for, for her work on both of those projects. Um, as well as I, and I think I didn't mention last time and it weighed on me a little bit that those Aqua Grants too that we received also were grant applications. The, the initial one and then the two that we are receiving this year um were grant applications that were submitted by uh by Jan. So she's
Awesome.
definitely uh rocking and rolling in the grant world. And, and we're getting some projects done. It's very exciting. Uh, some updates with our, our bigger projects, Jackloft Bay Dock Replacement Project. Uh, we're supposed to be receiving a ninety-five percent design this week. Uh, once we've received that uh with the final cost estimate, we'll use that estimate uh to apply for funding through the Denali Commission for their FY twenty-five non-federal match funding opportunity. Uh, this is a gap funding opportunity that's specifically out there for these types of projects. It's exciting. It's on, they're, they're awarding on a rolling basis and they said get it in sooner than later. So we're hoping to get them, that in ASAP. Um, for permitting, which is the big, there was two components, right? Design and engineer and then permitting. Um, we sent out seven letters for comment today to local tribal governments. And public notice will go out um in general later on this month. The Kenai River Center Multi-Agency Permit and separate application to the Army Corps of Engineers are also scheduled to be submitted this month. So those are some pretty big chunks that we're working through um and still on schedule. Hopefully we will be able to put out an RFP this summer for the construction and have construction this fall. Haven't heard too many hiccups yet um that would delay that. So hopefully everything keeps going smoothly. Uh, we also were able to amend our application with the reduced footprint for the Jackloft Bay Uplands. Uh, that was submitted to D, to DNR um and we received a response back that they received it uh and have added it to our case file and they'll contact us if they need any further information. So that was done in December. The Raw Water Transmission Line Replacement Project. We did receive a request from the EPA for more information regarding the environmental review, which is where the status of the project right now is, is going for that environmental review process. Um, we were told previously that they hoped to anti- uh, or that they anticipated to award those funds in January. I'm hoping that's still the case. Um, we're working on our response back um with our, our technical partner through the RCAC, Greg McGee. Um, and hoping to get that out later on this week. For the septic lift station project, uh materials for the project have been ordered. We, some have been received. They're being stored in the contractor's Kenai office currently. Um, he's getting, he's working really hard to get everything put together and ready so that when the ferry comes online, he can just cut, hop over here and get it done. So I'll let you know how that goes. Um, but that will be ferry dependent. For CDS request um for the material for safe roads, yes, uh, this was a federal appropriate appropriation from what FY twenty-three? It's been a while. Um.
Couple of years.
It's been a while. It made it through the STIP process and now they're just trying to figure out how to get it to us um with the biggest bang for our buck because there's a lot of overhead and a lot of um nickeling and diming and swirling. So uh we're trying to work, the state is trying to work with the Denali Commission to have the money funneled to the city um through their organization. I had a lovely call with an individual from the organization last month and they are aware of the appropriation. They've been speaking with the state about it. Um, they're still working through that process and will let us know when they have an update. Fish Creek Dam Restoration and Community Resiliency Project. This is the joint project with Saldovia Village Tribe and NOAA. Uh, we had a meeting last week to discuss project lead expectations and logistics. All agencies spoke in support of the project and we're moving forward with SVT being the grant application and project management lead. The application is due February twenty-seventh. Um, and it seems like all hands are on deck. It's very exciting. There's also as Paul mentioned la- at the last meeting, there's a lot of support from um out, outside agencies as well. So that's very, very exciting to to be able to work on that fun project, hopefully. I wanted to throw this out to you guys. Um, Representative Vance was uh on the meeting earlier today. The AML Winter Legislative Conference uh is being held February eighteenth through the twentieth in Juneau. Last year, myself, council member Langbart and City Clerk Diamond went. It was a really great experience, very eye-opening. We got to meet um with our legislative representatives and some of their staffers and then just hear from other um individuals in the legislators. So we don't have anything planned right now to attend or for anybody to go. But there is money in the budget. So if there's interest in going um from anybody on the council or if you want a staff person to go, let us know. We just, we haven't. It's February. Yeah, we, we, it hasn't been that strong of a, a focus as of yet. So let me know. If that's something that you're interested in. Uh, there was a KPB Tourism Industry Working Group. This started because of uh that legislation last year that went to the Kenai Peninsula Borough Assembly regarding a bed tax. So there was a response that instead of implementing a bed tax or instead of just looking at a bed tax, let's look at the industry as a whole. They formed the, the assembly formed this working group. Uh, Mayor Matiki is going to chair it. I was able to attend their initial meeting. It's the only one they've had so far. They have some pretty, uh, they have a pretty interesting group with some strong industry leaders uh involved. And there were already some, it was just, the initial meeting was more focused on uh housekeeping rules and initial questions. Um, but definitely everybody had a chance to speak and provide input for what they would like to focus on and what they would like to hear back um regarding information that would be helpful in these discussions. And there was already, I mean, it was, it seemed like there was some some really great, strong-minded individuals with some really good questions. So I'll be curious to see what comes of it. This, the municipalities are not formally on the committee. However, we're invited as stakeholders. So uh we attend and they did, uh, one of the the working group members did ask them to call out who the city representatives were there so that, just so that they could be aware that we were listening and in the audience. Um, and there was representation from every city. So this is definitely um something that we're all keeping our eye on. The city le- little, uh, city logo rebrand project is going well. Uh, we've had a lot of options. We've uh keep working and, and going through the choices and I, I think we're getting close to the end. So if anybody wants to see those or wants any more information, definitely let me know. Uh, DOT collaboration, uh, we are still waiting to hear a response from DOT regarding a request to collaborate on the following initiatives, the lowering of the speed limit on Main Street to twenty miles per hour. The Main Street ADA sidewalk improvements, Jackloft Bay Uplands remediation, Saldovia Main Street Stormwater Management and support for the bike path on Jackloft Bay Road. Uh, we were told it was gonna take a while to get a response back because um these are some pretty heavy, heavy lift for projects and they have to go through various departments. Um, but I, I've tried to follow up a few times and haven't heard a response yet. So I'll let you know when we get that. Uh, Saldovia, quick Saldovia Planning Commission update. Commissioner Ryan, Commissioner Kroll and Commissioner Forsberg's terms are up uh or expired. Ryan and Kroll have expressed interest in being reappointed. Commissioner Forsberg has asked to step down but will remain active until his seat is filled. Commissioner Blanchard has submitted her resignation. So there are two seats, uh, two vacant seats currently being advertised. Uh, the commission is nearing the end of the discussion on the CB Subcommittee Recommendations. They're hoping to have a final discussion on, at the February fifth meeting to wrap up a few loose ends and then upon that have a final draft presented on their March fifth meeting before sending that recommendation to the Saldovia City Council. So with any luck, you guys could be seeing that in March or April. The commission is also discussing an abatement ordinance or, or updates to our abatement ordinance. A building zone permit update with topographical input impact. So that'll be more like a site plan um permit. And on a two thousand fourteen Saldovia Comprehensive Plan update with and there's potential support for that project from the Alaska Municipal League. The commission also finalized their request for council reconsideration of the rezoning application with additional information at their twenty, or at the January eighth meeting. Legislation reappointing Commissioner Ryan and Commissioner Kroll will be presented at the next regular city council meeting along with that request to reconsider the rezoning request. Uh, we've discussed in the past that there's a potential for an upcoming appropriation bill. You should see that happening, the ordinance introduction at the next city council meeting that will appropriate the remaining ARPA funds and funds from the Major Maintenance and Repair Fund. Um, and those will be going towards water and a little bit towards sewer. Just uh, we had a, a part that we purchased last year and the invoice fell over into um FY twenty-five. So taking some of those funds from Major Maintenance and Repair to cover that um as well as some for uh this additional labor and and uh equipment that have had to be purchased for the water treatment plant. We, you know, we were told when it went online in two thousand seventeen, May two thousand seventeen, that there were some parts that we were gonna have to replace in about seven years. And they were bigger parts, you know, looking at media, looking at pumps. And that's always kind of been on the back of the, uh, back of our minds and how do we budget? And then as we've seen the plant operate, it's kind of come about that that's maybe not necessarily an issue. Um, however, we're now, we're having these smaller, you know, sensors and pot pumps and different things that are going out. Um, that really keeps reminding me and bringing me to, bringing to mind that um the plant has been in operation for eight years now. There is some wear and tear. This is something we probably can look, look towards um in the future is just having to replace parts as they, as they and get to the end of their useful life. So we're making sure to include that in our asset management so we can track that in the future and not be um so caught. And not be um, so caught unawares as these parts. Come to their end. Yeah. So that's just, it seems like that's where we're at with it. Uh, exciting news on the VPSO job vacancy. Dewey New House was offered the position and has accepted. He starts on January fifteenth in Anchorage and he'll be prepping for the academy, which begins on January twenty-fifth. His graduation is scheduled to be held on March twenty-seventh where he'll come to the community. And then a few weeks after he gets here, um, he or about a month. After he gets back into the community, he will go for an additional training. Um, and that will provide him with his required ETT and fire training with the hopes that all of his certification will be completed by mid-May. So we want to really welcome aboard Dewey. Our tsunami inundation brochures have us uh, have arrived. You can see some on the table here. We have um, distributed, we're. We're sharing with Saldovia Village Tribe. This was a joint project, so we uh, did distribute um, a large portion of them to. To Saldovia Village Tribe and then a few businesses in the community and then we'll continue to do that throughout the year. The historic boardwalk, we've talked before that there's a legacy grant opportunity available through the through the Rasmussen Foundation. Um, that we continue to hope to pursue. Jerry Stanek obtained a quote for the repairs and has been in communication with the foundation. Uh, this application period closes March twenty-fifth. I also wanted to throw out there when I started looking into it further. Um. I appreciate wanting to get the historic boardwalk completed. However, it might also be a great avenue. To consider for the Saldovia Fuel and Lub Roof if we don't receive the CDBG. So I'm just. Not working on that application quite yet. We can, as we get closer, look at that and see what happens. Um, but that definitely seems to be. A more pressing issue. Utility rate study, we we waited on this for a while. We finally received it from our previous local government specialists. I haven't had a chance to fully review it, but. From our basic understanding of the study is that the city is where they should be regarding utility rate structure and that we are doing well. That's what we keep being told. And then the rest you guys have seen. Um, I did just put that shout out to Finance Officer Jaeger for submitting the grant applications for the the Aqua. Grants that we received um, here recently, just wanting to make sure uh, to acknowledge that um, and all of her hard work. So. Thank you, guys. Please let me know if you have any questions.
Thanks, Heidi. Uh, one real quick first one, um, current storm damage from, do you have any, do you talk to HEA today at all? On where we're at with generator and what's what the anticipated time is that we're going to be on that?
Not, but I can follow up with them first thing in the morning.
Okay. Sounds good. Any other questions, comments from council?
Well, I just want to, um, Mayor Campbell.
Yep.
I need lots of good work there happening and appreciate all your work. Uh, I have the same question about us being on the generator, but. Um, evidently, there's an issue out the road somewhere.
Last I heard, it was in the McQ and Flats area, but I can get a better update on that.
And uh. Um, yeah, okay, thank you.
I had one more follow-up on the um, you said the ninety-five percent documents are going to be due out here next week or next week, a couple of weeks?
Hopefully this week because we want to utilize that cost estimate to apply for the Denali Commission Grant.
Okay, and I uh, I'm I could have been asleep at the wheel, but uh, are those available anywhere to look at the like the sixty-fives?
We ended up skipping the sixty-five and going straight to ninety-five from the thirty-five because it was pretty close.
Okay, okay.
The the components that they're adding on for the ninety-five, um, which we were in support of. Is some additional safety components, which we didn't discuss previously. Um, but it is recommended to add some fire ladders, uh, a few uh, life safety ring cabinets with life safety. Rings um, and fire extinguishers.
Is there a way we can get like uh, when you do get those in hand at the next meeting or something? Can we get a little presentation just on where? Where we're at and some um, just maybe look at the drawings and um. Just to get an idea of what what uh, float system and what this thing's looking like?
Yeah. Absolutely.
That'd be great. Anything else for anyone? Okay, thanks, Heidi. Lots of good information there, a lot of good things happening. So as always, just keep moving, moving forward. All right, uh, let's see that it concludes item N. Item O is informational items not requiring action. Um, oh, one city. So the city offices will be closed on January twentieth, twenty twenty-five and observance of Martin Luther King Junior Day. And scroll down here real quick. Okay, and then um, item O two, um, as Heidi had mentioned, notice of vacancy. Instead of one, there'll be two Saldovia Planning Commission seats. So and those are both up on the website now. Okay. So if you know anyone that's looking to get involved uh, with city government, again, the younger folks need to need to step up and participate. So. Um, that would be great. And then um. That includes item O. Item P, executive session. Um, looks like we will be going into executive session this evening. As you guys know, Heidi's contract uh, two years has already passed here. Since she was hired as city manager. So um, the time is up to discuss um, performance review and. Uh, or um, renegotiation of a uh, new contract as she has indicated that she would like to. Um, uh, seek a renewal of her contract. So. We'll need to um, get a motion to go into executive session.
Mayor Campbell.
Yep, go ahead, John.
I move to enter the uh, into executive session pursuant to Alaska Statute forty-two or forty-four point sixty-two point three ten. AC. Or matters subject uh, that tend to prejudice or the reputation and character of any person. Provided, the person may request a public discussion for the city manager annual performance review and invite in Heidi Dagle.
Okay, and do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by um, John to go into enter into executive session. Second by um, Rojas. Any further discussion on that before we vote? Okay, hearing none. Um, we'll go ahead and vote on the motion to enter executive session. All those in favor? Peyton? Harmony, can you hear us?
Aye.
Okay, Keith Lee?
Aye.
Langbart?
Aye.
Barbara?
Aye.
Rojas?
Aye.
And Kennedy?
Hi.
Okay, motion passes. We will go ahead and enter into executive session with the city council and the city manager. And we um, what we'll do is go ahead, you're going to send out a new link, Liz?
Yes, I sent out a link to all the members that are attending virtually already and we will close out of this meeting for the council members. And sign on to that link. Um, if anybody needs it, please let me know.
Okay, so for the four online, you guys can sign on and then sign into the new one. Uh, and as you know, the rules apply. We'll need to make sure that you're in a room by yourself, et cetera, so that we can talk um, confidentially here. And that's it. We'll take a five-minute recess here while we're um, getting everybody switched over. Okay, we're in recess.